Bring it Dunbar for select me into order. Full board is present, town administrator. Leo Martell videotaping for the public and be uploaded by Lyndon Nickerson to the Dunbar website. Thank you for recording and welcome back Leo.
Thank you.
Alright, that being said, I have some old business gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to approve the regimens September fourth, twenty twenty five as amended.
I'll second that.
I have a comment if I would Dave on those minutes.
Go ahead.
I point this to the town administrator. I would like to have my name reflected correctly, this is my second request.
It's, it's, okay, is it in the regimens?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make sure.
That does not have to be done this time, but in the future because my name is listed twice differently.
Okay, then I will.
You want to be Michelle?
Yes. Mike.
If you prefer, if you say it for the record, so she has it in the video.
For the record, my name is Michael, not Mike.
Okay.
Okay. And then, okay, you can take the bullet.
Okay. Most have been made, second all in favor? Here you go, Michael.
Thank you David.
I'm not gonna say I don't always remember that, but I'll try.
You won't screw up mine. It's my last name.
This is the way.
It's a minor detail, but I think I just like to have it correct.
Leo, any public comments since you've been gone?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Bob Martell and Fred Muller for standing in for me. I appreciate that a lot and I'd also like to thank Jeff and the DPW crew who fixed the road and my driveway is finally straightened out.
Nice.
And it looks good, looks like it's gonna work.
Yep, they've been doing a lot of work around town.
Yeah, so I was amazed that that was done, good.
Alright, thank you Leo for those comments. Going on to the first item on town business. We have an MS one completed, accepted by the board of assessors and filed with the DRA. The total revaluation property values came in seven hundred and forty-seven million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars. An increase of three hundred and twenty-two million, one seventy-five. That's not what it says. Three hundred and twenty-two million.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, you are correct.
One seventy-five, one oh two. Over the twelve thousand and twenty-four values. Almost doubled.
Exactly, but definitely higher than our last revale in twenty twenty. We only saw an increase of seventy-eight million, so this is definitely a bigger increase with the new construction and. But we were at fifty-seven percent ratio before the revale, so this has brought us up to ninety-seven percent of the market.
Okay, thank you for that information, Lane.
And for the public, could you explain what happens if property values go down? What's the, what happens when the procedures thing, unless the next two years we have lose ten percent of the market value?
Well, then what, when they run the record of conducting the ratio, then there have been times that we have been at a hundred and seven percent of the market. So the ratio will go up and, um, but it's a balancing act. When you're, when you're at the low end and properties are selling for higher, we can't change your assessment to reflect the new sale price until we go through a revale.
Okay, thank you, I just, I just feel that's when a question is gonna come up. Bottom line, the revenue stay the same regardless of whether you're undervalued or overvalued.
Right, I think I recall the first year that I came to the town, when I looked at the really beautiful colonials and they were only appraised at two hundred and fifty thousand, I thought, wow, I'm moving to Dunbar. But what I didn't realize is that we were at that fifty percent range and once we went through that next revale in twenty twenty, in two thousand and five, all those lower prices or values went up to meet the current market.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I, can I just, I just wanna ask for the public and for myself, I guess, just to make sure. If a property is sold from one person to another, the assessment value remains where it was, it doesn't get adjusted based on the sales.
That's correct. In between revales, that's correct.
Yes.
When the revale does occur.
I want people to recognize, that's not the case in every state, that's why I wanted to mention that.
Right, so typically what happens is if someone, if your property is assessed at four hundred thousand and there, as it currently is, no inventory and it's selling for a hundred thousand dollars more than what you're assessed at, that purchase is just a purchase only on paper. The assessment stays the same until there's either a building permit that changes the value or something that changes in on.
An improvement or deficiency in the, in the property.
Correct.
Yep. But that data is stored for the next reassessment, so the reassessors use that information for market data.
To correct, to determine if it's a valid sale or not and it would then incorporate that transfer in the new data collecting.
Okay. That's important because there, there could be people that come from other states where that rule is different and, but in New Hampshire, it's what you described. Reassessed value stays the same regardless of the purchased value.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Typically don't match.
Correct.
You're welcome, okay, so next thing, item number two is review revenues and set the overlay amount for use of the tax rate setting for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so your revenue report that I've handed you in your packet is a few weeks early, few weeks shy, I ran it today. I just want to point out that pending revenues that we will collect before the end of the year would be the rooms and meals that will come in at tax rate setting. And even though we currently have a projected budget of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, if the DRA comes in and says you're getting two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, whenever that number comes in, I have to adjust my projected revenues to reflect what we actually receive. So there's only a few items within this budget that would, that this DRA overrides. So if we project conservatively for highway, for flood control, for PLT, which is the federal forest revenue, rooms and meals, all of those in that state and government section will get adjusted at tax rate settle. And so right now I've received the flood control money, we budgeted seventy thousand dollars, it came in at seventy-five thousand, six thirty-six point eight six. So the DRA will increase our revenues for flood control when we set the tax rate. The only one piece that I'm missing from the state is the rooms and meals and I'm.
Which is a big one.
Yeah, I'm hoping it's gonna be a big one because they do, they are saying that there's supposed to be a thirty percent cut, but they're also saying that the revenues projected are two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred million more than what they projected. So how that's gonna affect that thirty percent, I don't know, but I'm, I'm sure that we're in a good spot for what we budgeted conservatively.
And I just wanna say for the benefit of Dana, that's why we, when we make the budget, we always conservative with the anticipated room and meals. Because we get a bad year, we overestimate it, the burden's gonna fall on the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So by making a budget, including, we were conservative and we get a, not a surprise, but we had more than we anticipated, it's a good thing for the taxpayer of town.
So it basically will increase our available surplus that the board can decide to use against.
This is the overlay information Dana. So that's from PSNH basically for the overlay.
And the other thing that is missing on our current revenue report is four months of town clerk revenues. She exports at the end of the first of the month, so we haven't received the September, October, November, December. She's been, she's had a pretty good year, so to date, she's only short from her budgeted number eighty-nine thousand dollars. So I don't have, I don't see any issue with us not going higher than what we anticipated. And then we have three months of miscellaneous revenues and then one quarter of the highway block rent doesn't come into the, our account until October, November. So I, our revenues will be coming in higher than we expected, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention because with this information, the select board has the opportunity to either use what we may think is excess revenue to decrease the tax rate or the other piece that we have to consider is the overlay amount that we have to set aside, which is an added tax to cover any abatements that may come through and in, and that's due in April. And we abate the value and taxes from the prior year, so that would be this calendar year, twenty twenty-five.
Now, the good thing, if we put money towards abatements, if it's not used, it still stays within the town. It's not going anywhere. It's just keeping our rainy day fund from being exhausted.
Right. But you were talking about what, just putting fifty thousand towards those abatements?
Yes, that's what I'm recommending.
Huge amount, so I think that's very reasonable.
So last year, if you look at the, I have a lot of information with my memo there, but the tax rate setting that we set last year, we set the overlay at twenty-five thousand. And when we came to the final penny of setting the tax rate, that overlay amount was adjusted because that's what she uses, the DRA uses as a floating number. So if there's thousands numbers and they have to subtract from somewhere, I told them we wanted to use twenty-five thousand, that final number at tax rate setting came in at twenty-two thousand nine hundred and change. So that's where, that's like that holding spot. Twenty-five thousand has been a good number for these last few years. Many, only recently we do we see a lot of abatements, but in a year of a revale, we'll see a jump. When people get their tax bill in December, then they start carefully looking at their assessment to find out why that.
Yeah, just remember they did have the opportunity to men earlier.
Yep.
Assessor.
And in twenty twenty, we did return about forty thousand in abatement taxes, so, and it was, they were, had to be valid. So that's why I'd rather conserve, budget conservatively or for this request, the fifty thousand dollars, only because if we don't, we deplete our surplus. They have to refund it and.
I think it's a reasonable approach.
Yeah, we're gonna have another month of revenues before we make that decision anyway.
I'm gonna be saying, I'm first in the queue right here, right now, so I'll probably be setting the tax rate within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, we always do it in October, right? It's when you're gonna get the rest of your state funds.
Yep, and at that point when they're calling me on the phone, we're setting the tax rate. So this is the only piece that the board has to be involved in as far as setting. Everything else is controlled by the board of assessors and if in past years we've never changed or spent any additional revenues that we expect to get more of because then we end up using excess revenues and lapsing budget towards the next.
Then the following year.
Yeah, it's worked out well for the last few years.
I agree with the fifty thousand dollars, Lane, I think that's a reasonable amount.
I think so as well.
I don't wanna put more than that in there because we do have rainy day funds, so.
Well, right now, if you look at the memo and the financial statement, it's six hundred and nine thousand dollars. I think I wrote it out on here. Because, six hundred and seventy-three thousand. And the financial statement said we had one million, seventy-two thousand, nine thirty-seven, but when you look at what we used in March of twenty twenty-five, we applied at three hundred eighty-six, one ninety-eight and thirteen thousand, fifty dollars for the sale of the fire, fire truck. So we spent of that million dollars, four hundred thousand dollars. And that's on this little worksheet here, Dave, that outlines the audit, MS five thirty-five.
Yes, he's one million, seventy-two, a thousand.
Yeah. And then overall, our budget went up about four hundred thousand dollars and then the local school went up a million dollars. So there, therefore our percent retained will be lower than the two point nine percent.
That six seventy-three include the DRA amount?
The DRA. Now, the DRA sees the one million, seventy-two thousand, but she's also going to spend and take an account for the two articles that we spent some on March.
Right.
And she'll be using that six seventy-three, six eighty-nine after she has all the parts, the ones from the state end, the local school and the county plus the town. And more than likely, our three point nine percent retainage right now will be at three percent.
Dave, ask your question again, I think, I think, I understand what you asked, it wasn't, that wasn't probably the answer you were looking for.
It doesn't include it.
Okay.
The, the six seventy-three, six eighty-nine, I was asking if that includes our rainy day fund and it does.
That is a rainy day fund.
Yes, that, that's after we've, see, this is a twenty twenty-five expense, the audit is a twenty twenty-four year ending balance.
Okay, and that, that six seventy-three, just, you said it's about three percent?
I would say it's gonna be around three percent or a high two because everyone's budgets went up.
Right, and DRA recommends five percent, so we, we grew that from, from about thirty thousand dollars years ago to more respectful, respectful amount, respectable amount. And, but the thing is, what's, what offsets that is like, how much debt does a town side have? We have a, we have a, we have a bond that we pay on the, the roads and that's budgeted, but I don't think there's much more than that, no. And that's why we, we can get away with, not get away with, we can tolerate a little risk of maybe three percent.
The reason, the reason other towns have to have more is when they have more liability out there, more loans and bonds and different things funded.
Yeah, if you had to borrow, you would need to have that.
Right.
You need to show that.
We don't really have that in this town so, so far. That's for you to keep up.
But in the past, just a former selectman in the past would look at the rainy day fund, go to the voters and say, I wanna take two hundred thousand dollars, whatever, a big amount of money and apply it towards taxes, basically drain the rainy day fund to offset taxes and the audience says, yeah, I wanna lower taxes. Most for it. And it wasn't a, some people may not look at that as a great move. It puts the town at risk.
Okay. Everybody good with that one? Alright, let's move on. The next note I have under town business is fire chief Brendan Scoville recommends a new hire. Selectman Dana LaGuard will speak on this.
Yeah, so Brendan met with me yesterday, he has a potential new hire that he would like to move on, he's EMS qualified. He said that he hasn't gone through his physical yet, but the person has a personal physical scheduled and they're gonna use that for the physical for the position. The, what information else can I have here? I think the, the person recently moved to Dunbar, so they're, they're living, they live in Dunbar.
So this is for the fire department?
This is the fire department as an EMS person.
Full-time, part-time?
Just EMS, per diem.
Per diem, okay, gotcha.
Okay. Thank you.
In this case here, he's actually not doing the per diem work, but there's different wages, it's on the back sheet, the last sheet attached. They have different levels of pay for different services for that, and those volunteers.
Did he highlight the one you recommended?
Yes, he is, so under EMT here, there's a twenty twenty-five, any reason not to mention the.
No, no, that's fine, that's perfect.
The hourly pay, fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour. And so I think he, he wants approval to move on this person if they pass pending their physical.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I see that application?
I didn't remember everything else that he talked to, except that he said that this is a, a fully qualified EMT person. And in fact, there was a recent call in that area of where this person lives and as a volunteer, he actually showed up to the call and made a difference in helping one of our town residents.
So the chief is one hundred percent behind us?
Chief is a hundred percent behind us.
Okay, thank you.
And he just couldn't be here, so he just wanted at least someone to speak to it, obviously I, I'm only speaking to what chief told me.
I'm good with that.
He's been trying to build his on-call individuals that respond, which they have more qualifications, so he's very excited to do this.
Yeah, one, one other piece that he did say is having more EMT people like this. If they do an ambulance dispatch and it, and it requires a transport to the hospital, they need to have two EMTs on the truck. This just adds to his bullpen essentially of having another EMT, because if they do do a transfer to the hospital, we get reimbursed for that. If they, the, the EMT, yes. If they can't transport to the hospital, because they only have one EMT, we don't give funds for that.
No, we have to.
We don't get reimbursed.
We have to call mutually.
Yeah, and some other town gets the funds.
Next week, it looks like we're not gonna get the funds anymore. Okay, I'll make a motion to rehire Kristen Kellerman as a fire department EMS.
Yeah, the rate is in the back.
At a rate of fourteen seventy-eight per hour. And that's the emergency medical provider, EMT, twenty twenty-five rate.
Pending a successful.
Pending a successful.
Physical.
That he's gonna submit.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion's been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep. Let them know we're good to go. Thanks for bringing that in Dana.
Yep.
I'm gonna go on to mailbox items here. I'll get this stuff going through. The town received a DOT driveway permit for the lane lot, which used to be called the rider lot, which is F three, O three, O five. We finally received the actual copy from the state that Mylar has been signed and has been through the registry.
Recorded, yeah.
So the only thing we got left to do on that property is to set up the closing. Lena and I will work on the funds, did you see that one bill they sent you?
I already printed it, put it in the basket to print.
So we're gonna compile all the bills that we've gotten from Jacques and whatnot and deduct them and.
In the, in the closing.
Paperwork. I did call Merrimack Title this week, there's a closing company that does very reasonable closings. The air phone is disconnected, so Jacques recommended that we call Maria Doddler and ask her who she's using.
Okay.
Cause she's an attorney that does a lot with Jacques and she obviously has a new title company, but most of those title companies are only like a hundred and fifty dollars for closing, so.
I would say between two hundred, three hundred dollars.
Yeah. One thing we've gotta decide is whether we wanna get title insurance on the property or not. So maybe talk with the title company about that and give them the recommendations to us.
Okay.
And what it would cost.
Yeah, it's typically pretty cheap and I would think for the town, we should probably do it.
Because we're probably gonna hold it for a long time and you don't want any.
Relatives come up at the last minute, ten years from now saying it's mine.
Saying it's, yeah.
So it's probably four or five hundred dollars.
And, and in New England, right, we have a lot of, you know, pilgrims are here in sixteen, twenty, right, so there could be a lot of potential previous claims.
And somebody said it was probably done prior to this, but whether it was done for another person or not, it's not for us. They do a title search, title insurance at the time of closing, actually just before, so I'd say we probably should do it for the town and get that done.
And so we have consensus, I'd say, would you say go for it?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know if the title insurance market fluctuates in terms of what rates they have, you know, in terms of things. It's a fairly low incident, they, they get very few claims, so they're, they're making a bundle on this for sure, but I would, I, I don't know.
Cap it, I'll put a cap on it?
I would, but I don't even know what that cap would be, is it a thousand dollars?
Let's get an estimate, I'll be.
Yeah, let's, let's get a sense.
It's probably four or five hundred dollars, it's not really crazy.
If it's, yeah, to me, if it's something like that, it's a no-brainer, just do it.
There's no, there's no building.
For some reason it comes in at five thousand dollars, we might say, eh.
Yeah. But we'll work on that because we're gonna get that done and signed and I think she's anxious to get it all what too.
Yeah, okay.
Could I recommend that, that we have the town administrator basically canvass us individually for approval, so we don't have to hold up closing?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Lane? It's nice to see it actually came through.
Yeah.
Okay. The next thing we have on the mailbox, an email from SAU sixty-seven.
It might be Marcia, I might have missed a letter.
It looks like Marcia Kelly, to see if any of the BOS are interested serving on the strategic planning committee. On the last plan was in wed, twenty fifteen, they would like to renew the plan every five years. Anybody wanna get on the SAU to do that? You guys must have got the email at your home. Did you read the email at home?
I did, yeah. I think it's a good idea for someone to participate, I think I asked a question, I'm assuming there's, you know, folks on the school board that are on this.
Yeah, I think so.
For sure.
Does it, I know it's a new realm of the school board, isn't it?
It certainly is.
But you could give them some insight from the town's position on that, you know?
I'll, I'll volunteer to do it, I would consider it optional, if there's a conflict with something else, I might not attend one of their meetings because they did indicate that it's gonna be a fairly aggressive job to get this done, it might even be meetings every two weeks. I don't know when, if it's during the day, that's easier, if it's evenings, that makes it a little more difficult, but I'll, you know, if the board wants, I will.
Said twice a month meeting.
Okay.
After school through June.
After school. That could be three o'clock.
Yeah, so.
I mean, if it's late afternoon, it's easier.
And it's Marcy, Marcy Kelly.
Marcy?
Yeah.
It's Marcy.
I must have corrected, spelt it.
So are you, yeah, are we okay with?
Yeah, I think so, I think that you miss one, you miss one, I think.
Yeah, I think the school board has the majority of the responsibility and input here. But if there's something that we can, we can provide value to, then at least we'll have someone there.
Well, the thing is, I, I feel the, we, we don't get briefed as often as we did, you know, from the school board.
Yeah, they used to meet with the board at free.
And give us a, a rundown of what's happening in school, but I learned what, like any other voter, I go to the school board, I mean, I go to the hearings, the school, before they do the warrant and that's all I know about it, is it's not shared what they're saying on.
Right.
And they, no.
Do you want me to answer her, Lane?
Yeah, you, you wrote it in the email, right?
Yeah, yep. It came to our selectman email.
Yeah.
The next thing I have here is a Primex incident report form should be complete, all department heads when damage occurs, town equipment and or property. We had been noticed of the fence down there and we got billing in for that fence.
I hadn't seen anything.
I forwarded to you.
When?
It came from Justin's company.
I didn't.
Girl in his office sent it to me and forwarded to you, it was, it looked like forty-two hundred dollars for the fence repair.
Oh, that's well within the insurance claim.
Yeah, I wanted to talk to you guys about that. The, we only have a thousand dollar deductible from what I saw on our property damage then, but I think it's wise for us as a board to decide what we wanna put in front of our insurance because if you start making a bunch of small claims, it's gonna adversely affect our rate. Like myself, even though my homeowner's insurance policy might have a thousand dollars, I probably wouldn't make a claim unless it was five thousand or more. Only because you give them a bunch of small claims, your claims are either gonna get dropped or your rate's gonna go away.
Well, following that same logic, then we are wrong for having such a low deductible, we should have had a five thousand dollar deductible, so we are wrong for not pursuing.
Well, I, I think we should look into that and see because I think it's a combination and.
That's actually something that I mentioned, is that we might wanna raise our deductible to twenty-five hundred or.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, whatever the, whatever the increments are.
If we get appropriate discount with that.
Because let's face it, as a town, we're not gonna probably put a claim in unless it's.
I don't have it.
Five thousand dollars or something.
I don't have it, well, police department takes advantage of that, they would like to get, keep their vehicles in tip-top shape, so if it's gonna be a fourteen hundred dollar estimate.
Is the auto different from the property?
Yeah.
No, it's the same, it's all.
No, I bet you the deductible is just like your home, right, you're gonna. No, I bet you the deductible is just like your home, right, you're gonna, you have a different deductible on your home or your.
You're talking property damage versus vehicle damage, it's a whole different policy.
And I would, I would think that the police is under kind of a special police policy too, because they go and they can ram cars and.
No, I'll share, I'll share the policy with you, but I don't believe that's the case. We only have one budget line, that's a thousand dollars, so any one of our policies is a, is covered for one incident, whether it's a property, whether it's a vehicle, whether it's an injury, we have a thousand dollars out of our pocket, we, uh, cover. And then the rest is covered through our insurance.
Interesting.
So before we do, I think we should get some better rates, uh, we should look at rates if, with the higher deductibles.
Well, Primax is a good company to look at, I just think we need to maybe look at that with our agent and decide what we wanna do, because. We might be paying a, a, an amount up here and we could pay down here with a higher deductible and not claim every little bumper. Um, one thing, um, what he didn't mention in there, he's, he thought he had enough in his maintenance to cover, but he wouldn't know what the bill was, and do you know how much is in his maintenance line or not?
No, but you didn't send it to me, I just looked at her emails, I did not get any, I just got the Belanger and, um.
Yeah, I did at the same time as Belanger, so, that's all right, I'll send it again. It was forty two hundred. It could've been a little changed, but.
As they say, check spam.
Now, that included taking the fence apart for, um, the demolition company to replace the concrete as well. And it, it was replacing, um, the top rail along a bunch of the fence, because people have been denting it, going over the top rail. And it was fixing a gate and some wheels on the gate, looked like they were replacing a gate.
Yeah, you'll have to send it again, I don't have it.
Yeah, that's okay, I'll afford it.
Can I ask just, uh, what's been standard operating procedure in the town here in the past?
I know the last one we did down there was maintenance.
Whenever there's a incident, I don't care what it is, let's say, you know, i- ice falls and damages an HVAC unit or any, whenever there's anything that happens, do we actually submit a incident form to our insurance company, whether we claim it or not?
Yes, and we also.
Do we get into the discussion whether we wanna claim it after we submit that?
I think there's a checkbox that says for information only, so it doesn't necessarily mean that we're filing a claim, that they're loo- not looking for us to request any reimbursement in that, because we feel the expense or the cost is minimal enough that we won't be, but it's just documenting it.
It says incident only, yes or no, my problem is if you provide them with twenty incidences and they have these forms and they look at it to renew your insurance, sure, now, they had twenty, they didn't.
How many we ask the agent that question? Because here's the, uh, here's the flip side, I, I get your point, right, you don't want them to think like, boy, these guys are, you know.
Yeah, they get one every month, especially.
They're getting things happen. On ours, on the other side is, what if something occurs, right? Let's say, you know, ice hits a HVAC unit and then two months later, the HVAC unit stops working. Well, that's not just because it mechanically died, it would be, would've been because of an accident. And if you had made the claim timely, or at least noticed them timely, you might actually get it covered. Uh, a ten thousand dollar, you know, repair of your HVAC unit. That's what I'm looking at, is, is there benefit to actually noticing?
I, I think there is, because if there was a, say there was an injury to us, say an employee had an inj- occult injury.
So I think an injury is a whole different story.
I, I think it is too.
All injuries gotta be numbered.
Yes, but occult injuries, let's say someone was involved in an accident, hitting something, didn't have any injuries, then three months later he goes, when I got in, when I hit that wall, I didn't realize, but my neck was out of joint, I didn't report it, because I thought it was nothing. We gotta have some sort of, uh, an audit trail to sho- to document these things.
So as part of, can we just ask Lee, and, and I'm happy to work with you, Lee, on this, is, is talk to the insurance agent about th- this, this whole scenario, what standard procedure, we don't wanna get dinged for reporting things if they're incident only.
I, I would use this as an example, I mean, this is a forty two hundred dollar bill, it's not that big. We have it in our budget line, whether it's our maintenance or his line, to do and see, see what their thought is on.
And the que- uh, question I will have is, as a municipality, will our insurance rates go up? As a homeowner, we, I know, Dave knows, we, our, but as a municipality, is it gonna affect my future insurance rates?
If you gave your homeowner's insurance twenty things, or ten things, and even though you didn't claim them, they're looking at you differently next year. I give them nothing and they still look at it differently.
But it's wor- I think it's worthwhile. Because if, if they can guarantee that my rates aren't gonna go up, it's gonna be across the board, it's even with everyone else with insurance rate increases. And we should, we should not let this come out of our, we have insurance for that purpose, otherwise, why would we buy insurance?
So we'll keep this an active discussion for the next meeting?
I think we should, yes. And Lee, Lee and I will, she'll be the lead, I'll be our backup.
Okay, there's another notice here from JSJ Auctions that another auction will be held Saturday, October eighteen, twenty twenty five. The town policy and information has been copied to all department heads. Lee, we still have at least one department head hasn't returned that?
That's correct.
Just one?
Okay, do we know why?
I'll work on that, he, he'd said something about there was something else that wasn't right on it and I don't know what it was, wanted to be honest with you.
That I was supposed to ask today and I got sidetracked.
Just, just for the record though, that policy came from our auditor, I.
I know all that.
Right, but I.
They went over that, so let us work on it. It's nothing, we're gonna skip, Lee. Okay, that's here. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, we have an email from Chief Scoville, request permission to send the old command vehicle to auction. See the email reasons not to use the equipment in another department.
Just enough why, that was a please hand me down to the fire department.
What was it?
And so it's like, it's, he finally got a replacement.
It says, given the decay and lack of reliability.
Sounds like something that you might wanna bid on, Dave.
I'll let somebody do a bid first, then I'll come in.
The bid does take up a lot of the individual's time to put that together. This is a, um, a sure way of the town receiving any proceeds.
We have, we have done well with these before, I will say.
Vehicles have done.
We've done well.
Really, yes.
Everything actually we put in there is done pretty good.
So do we need a motion for this?
It is requested by us, so yeah.
I make a motion that we allow the fire department to move a, uh, surplus vehicle, an old surplus vehicle to the auction line.
To the JSJ auction.
JSJ auction.
Coming up in October. I will second that.
Motion's been made, second all in favor? Next thing we have is a, um, we have a thank you cards with Dunbar Garden Club, the town administration will help, making the mum sale a huge success. Dear Lee, we would like to thank you for your help with us securing tables and placing banners as part of the annual mum sale. We are pleased to say that the fundraiser was a huge success and you're helping us to continue to invest in the beautiful town we live in. Sincerely, Dawn V, DGC Chair Committee. That's a very nice letter, you put that in your file, Lee?
I think I need to, but I just, um, they do, do a lot to beautify the town and.
We haven't had a good one for you for a while, Ben, put in there. We gotta keep the meeting going.
Do you know how their sales, sales went?
She said they were a big success, they, they started Friday and they go through Sunday. And that place is mobbed.
Was this like the three for twenty dollar ones?
And you can see the ones that they donated to the front of the office here. Common area, the library, uh, fire department received a few of them, but I did pick up these for the town office, so we're keeping them watered.
Yeah, it does.
Highway garage get any?
No, we did not.
That could use some beautifying.
Don't look at him when you're saying that.
His gas pumps are great. We're all set.
Okay, we have a, uh, another article in here from the Concord Monitor. News reporting successful horse rescue by the Dunbar Fire Department, September seventh at one thirty AM. Looks like Dunbar Fire were pulling a horse out of a marshy area early Sunday morning, courtesy Dunbar Fire Department. Dave Heiser got an unexpected early morning call from his Dunbar neighbor. Four of his horses had broken loose and wandered into the neighbor's property, more than a quarter mile away. After midnight, a tree branch crashed down on the fence holding Heiser's horses on his Everett Dam property. Giving the man, the, uh, animals a chance to slip away. It looks like one of the draft horses got sunk in there pretty good. Nice to see that they saved them successfully.
Surprised there's enough w- water, marshy areas, it's still left in town.
Yeah, look at that, the whole horse is underneath the water, so. Those are big horses too.
Everett Dam Road has some pretty wet areas.
Twenty five hundred pounds or three thousand pounds? Okay, we got an email here from the Dunbar Garden Club, wanted to donate twelve eight foot plastic tables to replace the old heavy wooden tables currently stored in one of the town's storage containers, down at the town shed there. Can the old ones be disposed of through the transfer station, question mark? They already bought the new tables, there's twelve of them, I think there's probably one of the old tables. They were wo- wooden top plywood tables with a metal surround. Not all of them had bad legs, but some of them did. Do you guys wanna keep any of them, or?
They're just really heavy and.
The old style, right?
I have no issues with this one.
Is there any value in offering them to anyone in town?
They're gonna let anybody in town use these new tables they have?
Instead of trashing them, would anybody in town, do we have any liability for offering them to a resident?
They're just really heavy.
But, but I can see where people might say, I'm not gonna move these things, I wanna set them up.
I'll ask Nora if there's anybody in town that we can offer them to.
We could delay it, we can just put it out. Where the table's physically located, I wanna.
It looks like they kept them at their house, so Nora's asking if they wanna bring them directly to the transfer station. So I'll call her and ask her. All right, FYI, workers comp claim confidential for our eyes only. The one in the box earlier? Okay, everybody's good with that one? We looked at it earlier when we were reviewing our paperwork.
Do you wanna initially be sorry?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a request for leave under FM LA submitted from the town, plea, care for a family member. Recently experienced loss of their mother, confidential tender plans to return to duty on October fourteenth.
Does the amount of sick leave that is accrued enough to cover their leave?
Um, I haven't looked at what he's accrued, I can get that information, but if he hasn't used, it's ten hours a month that he earns, so if he hasn't used, then he's been with us for a few years, he's probably closer to two hundred and forty hours.
I don't know a show of it.
That was well, nice request.
It's better than asphalt than.
Yeah, yeah. So there's actually an obligation to provide that anyway, so, yeah.
Yep, I think they changed those laws a few years back. Okay, that's all I have for mailbox, I'd like to go back to public comment. Uh, before we go into any meetings, Jeff, do you have anything for us for the public, I know you've been doing a lot of work around town? Before we go into a number.
Are they gonna store those new tables in that container?
I'll verify that with Nora tomorrow. Yeah, they just want them to be layered, carry, carry around.
Yeah, all the other ones are finger breakers, so.
I do know from when they moved out of the school, that's where we originally got them, some of the legs were loose on the bottom.
These are the old, like, they're varnished on top, right?
Yeah, that type of thing, and it's all deteriorated. I, I, last I knew, I opened the door to see what was in there, they were in there and there were some folding chairs in there. I don't know why we're keeping.
Like them, right?
I guess the school or somebody got new chairs and they ended up.
Tom Casano donated those for the old home they, they, to go.
And if you get a chance to remind me next week when we talk about finding the other chairs from upstairs. I thought they were in your container, Jeff, to be honest with you.
I didn't see them, the day I looked, it was a while ago, they could be there now.
We, we have, I think, a hundred and one or a hundred and ten actual seats up on the second floor. And there was another third or so more than that, that weren't operable enough to leave up to the end of one missing seat. Our thought was to take apart the bad ones and make several more good ones at the time, and I think they might be in a personal garage and I wanna get them back. And either get them to somebody to fix them for the town, or I just don't wanna see them go away, because.
You think Donna Dump would know where they were?
No, I think Tom. And they were stored in some plastic cover out here for a while, and I thought they went into your.
I'll look, I'll, I'll look again, I'll look tomorrow. Last thing, I knew those tables were in there and there were quite a few of those chairs. Metal folding chairs. They're on a rack, I thought they came from the school, cause the school got them, so.
I think they did.
And they gave them to us and if you're not gonna use them, why keep them?
Exactly.
That's all I say with that stuff, you know?
All right, um, any other public comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I said it earlier, but Jeff's here now, I'd like to thank Jeff for taking care of that road situation, and my driveway's nice. Think it's gonna work?
I think it'll work fine.
Yeah, I think it's gonna work, did a nice job, even got my firewood over the wall, well, reckon it.
Kimball Pond looks real nice as well, Joe. I'm a little sad to see my pole up there on the edge of it, though.
Yeah, that's where it went, repurposed it.
I thought that the, um, utility company came, took the pole down one day, and then, I don't know who called me, somebody from Twist Hill Road said, that pole was sticking out of a red dump truck so high in the air, they thought they were gonna catch a light. I said, red dump truck, I said, I wonder who that is?
Our phone company notified us that the, uh, wires had finally been moved, so I went around the end, we pulled a pole out. So the turnaround is a hundred percent complete. I was able to go down there with a ten wheel dump truck with equipment trail and escalator on it and turn it right around.
So it's the pole right in the middle of the.
It was in the middle of the turnaround.
I was out for the cops. It's on Kimball Pond Road.
So we, we repurposed it and delineated.
I looked at that pole and I started laughing, I said, Psyod, that rubbed off on.
Is it in the park, in the parking lot down there?
No, it, it is a, a curve where we're doing some road improvement. And especially after you've done something like that, we got rid of all the underbrush and stuff, and it's kind of a hazard if you cut too far over, so. I took that telephone pole and cut it in half and planted two poles and we put delineated markers on it, so when you're driving up there, like, you realize that there's a.
He's just, he's like a gardener, he took one pole and made two poles. Who you, you know what those roads are like. I laughed, cause Psyod, he's taken, built up beautiful roads, you know, and then he'd take all old metal guide rails and put them in. All wiggly down the side of the road, you know, cause they're all used. And I laughed when I saw the poles, cause they're all scarred up from, you know, with the. How you know if you're gonna put a couple sideways on there?
Strikes on the game, games.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
You wanna finish up with the.
Oh, yeah, do you guys have anything else for us?
I do, I have two things, um, the last meeting, we talked about Dunbar Community Power. Um, and we were given the okay to move forward with a. Um, and we were given the okay to move forward with a thirty-six month agreement. Uh, we haven't been able to pull the trigger yet, we've been in touch with them pretty regularly. And I'll give you the details, um, right now, the thirty-six month rates that we're seeing, they're holding steady. They're at eleven point three cents a kilowatt hour. I have them ready to execute if it hits eleven point two or below, uh, because Eversource is eleven point two right now. It's only a tenth of a cent above the Eversource rate.
So why are you holding on?
Um, just because it's above the Eversource rate.
But we made a motion at that meeting to execute, if they just answered a couple of your questions.
Um, yeah, but we didn't know what the rates were, I, I thought it was to only execute.
They gave a tentative rate on that graph. It's higher than that. It was like eleven point eight cents, I think, for three years.
No, 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 it wasn't that high, uh, the one on, on that graph, no, it was like eleven point. It was like right around this, eleven point three, so it's not the same number, I, I wanted to bring it up because I didn't feel comfortable. Um, executing something that's just above the Eversource rate.
Cause we were worried in December. They're gonna go up substantially, and I want you to listen to one thing that, um, he told me, tell me what your provider said's gonna happen after if you don't sign up.
Uh, after October sixth, I think it was, automatically goes up to eighteen point something.
Eversource?
No, uh, the provider I have.
Oh, 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 sure, I, no, okay, you have a third-party provider.
Yeah, right, I went online today searching to see what I could get, and I can get it cheaper than that, but they're talking to me about the, uh. The, uh, co-op here, and I'm, I'd rather do that.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I did notice you reached out to a second provider to see what they could offer us.
Yeah, that, that won't, that would get too complicated, I, I did wanna at least go down just so I had the information. But there's, there's something else I'm gonna bring up about that other provider, um, that's separate from Dunbar Community Power. Um, so, anyway, I'll bring it up, it's eleven point three cents pretty much right now if we wanted actionable pricing for thirty-six months.
You know, it's, it's like you're a betting person, the thing is, eleven point three for thirty-six months, it almost sounds like too good to believe.
And eleven point two, I would help us enough.
Honestly, I was just thinking that we would have the dip because natural gas prices even dipped a little bit. And the weather's been favorable and all of that, I, I was thinking we were gonna hit.
Baby drill.
No, I, I thought we were gonna hit eleven two and we'd be able to do it, in the last four or five days, we haven't hit it.
I think.
Just, I'll do the eleven three, okay.
It's so close Dana, I don't wanna.
I know, I know it's so.
Have it go to eleven eight next week and we're screwed, you know, cause we didn't connect.
Um, and, um, I did ask the question about are there any exit clauses? Um, out of the thirty-six month, that was one of the things I brought up, and there aren't.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, we didn't think so, I just, I wanted to ask the question, just in case there was like, yes, you can buy out for a certain amount or something, but there isn't.
An individual could drop any ton.
Yes.
I'm real happy about the long term, cause I hate looking at them.
It is pretty good, okay.
It's a good average.
We'll, uh, we'll talk to her tomorrow.
And I know when it was down to eight, nine percent, they, they did not allow us anything long term.
Yes.
It was like six months to a year.
One point three.
And I did look, if you're an individual, so this is something, uh, for you Leo, um, if you, if you were an individual and you were out there shopping yourself. You're gonna see somewhere between twelve and fourteen and a half cents right now, so this is lower than that. Because we are bidding for the entire town.
What I'm looking at is one year. They're, they're giving you one year. So, you know.
Yeah, this will be three years.
More comfortable with the three year.
I'll, I'll inform you guys tomorrow.
Especially where on an individual rate, it's up that much higher, we know this is gonna climb, I think.
Yeah, okay.
We have one more question through Jeff.
And if you still gotta be able to opt out of it, if you wanna stay with.
You will.
There's no penalties?
Nope.
Nope.
And that's easily done.
Easily done.
Will this be in place Dana, before the December rates of Eversource and? I don't wanna miss, you know, cause they're gonna go up.
Yeah, no, it would be, it would be executed probably around the December timeframe, cause they need like about sixty to seventy-five days. To do the postcards to everybody and.
Can you let them know we're looking to have it so it's around the same time?
As what, February first?
No, when they announced their rates.
They announce the rates in December, right?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
I, I don't wanna miss, when everybody gets these new rate increases, I don't wanna say we don't have anything in place again.
Okay.
Like to be there and be ready for it.
Once we sign this, though.
It's concrete.
We're locked in. So we're not, it won't change.
No, I know it won't change, I just know like, I don't wanna have people spend fourteen instead of eleven three. For two months till we get our downstream.
I get it. So the, the rates would be, will be announced by Eversource December fifteenth for the February first. And, okay.
So in that window, I'd like to have our downstream note too.
Okay, yeah, there's a certain time period we can't change, but if we do it, it'll actually execute around December.
Yeah, well, it sounds like a good plan.
Okay. Alright, good, glad I brought that up.
Cause I'm expecting them to go up. In December on that raise. Of course.
Yeah, unless there's some other, you know. Natural gas drop or something, but I.
Maybe Joel saying.
Uh, okay, so here's the other item that's, um, has come up, company called East Coast Renewable Energy contacted us. Um, you actually got the email, I believe, so I reached out to them and met with them, uh, on Tuesday. Here's the situation with them, what they do is they're a broker for, uh, renewable energy throughout the country. And what they, what they can do is in, they can offer you a ten percent discount. On your electric bill. Um, this is only for municipality, this would not affect residences. Um, has to be a municipality, a university, a school, or a hospital. It's only available to those four entities in the state of New Hampshire, um, due to legislation. But what they can do is if we have a thousand dollar bill through Eversource, and this includes the supply. The transmission and the delivery, all three of those components, they will credit us. Ten percent of that total, so if we're paying thousand, fifteen hundred, whatever it is. We'll get a credit for a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars depending on what our monthly bill is. Um, and it will go every month, it'll, we would, that credit would change based on that bill. Basically, what we're doing is we're telling them, and I, I supplied them with the, um. Eversource bill of ours of all the town properties this morning. And they're looking at that so that they know what they would be committing to, so essentially what they're doing is they're putting. A renewable solar farm that's somewhere in New Hampshire. That is connected to the Eversource system, and they're telling Eversource Dunbar municipality is gonna buy their energy. From this solar farm at a ten percent discount off of whatever Source is selling it for. Sounds a little too good to be true, but it's a real.
They know we have solar already.
They do know we have solar, that doesn't impact us in terms of our, our bills. The only thing it would impact, and I don't know, how, how low do our bills go in the June, July?
Uh, we may, we may get one building of all of our buildings that has a credit balance, everybody else is. Because the delivery is four hundred, five hundred dollars, we always have a three to five hundred dollar bill.
Okay, three to five hundred for all the buildings combined? Yeah, so in the summertime, it might be thirty to fifty dollar benefit, in the wintertime, it would be greater. It would be ten percent of the total though, because it's, it's all three components they provide that discount for.
That's pretty neat, but it affects the delivery.
It, it is. It is, and I went, I went through that with them, um, it, uh, it also. Says there's a little side benefit if you care about this, because it's a solar farm, it essentially means all of our use. Would be renewable, so it would be a hundred percent renewable, um, out of that.
And what about? The town I know could use the Dunbar Community Power.
Dunbar, yes, it could.
And if it's on Dunbar Community Power, does that affect that?
It does not. It doesn't matter who your third-party supplier is. It, the only difference is that that third-party supplier has to be billed through Eversource, because the agreement is through Eversource. Eversource, um, is, because Eversource is the utility that we use, Eversource is the one doing it, so Eversource looks at the bill. It doesn't matter who the energy supplier is, it could be direct energy out of Texas, it could be anybody. Eversource will provide that.
We're looking at the town portion of this, but if you add the school in, it's a lot bigger.
We already did.
I already asked, I asked for the school also, school is huge. The school is gonna, their, their eyes, no, I mean, not, not that their eyes matter, but they'll look at the, the school and be like, oh my god, that's like. You know, multiples of what the town's using in terms of, so the school can benefit this a lot, and I actually, when Lena and I were talking about the other day, I said. I want that school bill, because that, that could be, you know, like, what's the last bill I saw was like, uh. Twenty-five hundred dollars or?
No, it was more than that, it was like four thousand.
Was it four, okay, so.
Is there a time limit where we have to sign up with them?
And how long a period of time would this be due for?
Four thousand seven hundred dollars for one.
Okay, yeah, so four, that's a one month at the, what they don't, they won't cover.
What are they doing over there?
Um, they, they don't cover the customer charge, um, which is what now, I don't know. Sixteen dollars or something, they don't cover that, and if you had any other things on there, um. I, they, they came, they gave some examples, like if you leased some equipment from them or something, we don't have any of that. Um, they don't cover that, it's actually just the three portions that I'm talking about, the delivery, transmission and, and power. Um, so, good question, it is a twenty-year agreement. Cancelable with a hundred and eighty-day notice. And I asked about that because twenty years is a long time with technology, what if? Ten years from now, there's some hydro deal where Hydro Quebec says, we'll give you twenty percent off your bill. Uh, we would have a hundred and eighty days to.
Do they also have a hundred and eighty days?
To, for them to cancel, uh, I don't, I don't know that answer.
That would be important, I guess.
If, if, if they could cancel? I'll, I can ask that.
I, I would like to see the dust settle on what we're doing now, before we jump into something else.
It's totally different though.
Yes, but still, uh, I.
You mean Dunbar Community Power?
Yes, I can see that, I, I would like to move on this maybe January to at least get Community Power going.
I think this is gonna take some time anyway, so, I, I mean, literally, this is just a Tuesday meeting, right, where I even worried about this.
They have to, they have to buy us out once, they have to buy that power out as well, cause they're committing their solar farm to it.
Correct, I did ask, are these solar farms, uh, proposed, under construction or already built? And they said, right now, New Hampshire has already built ones, so there are solar farms looking for.
Customers.
Customers, so we would just be a customer, um, of this, of the solar farm. I don't know, I don't know if it matters, I don't believe you know which solar farm, cause it could be. A company that has four or five solar farms in New Hampshire, um, you wouldn't know which one is actually coming through, but we will know the company. Because that's the agreement, that's the company we would do the agreement.
It doesn't jeopardize the agreement we have with, with Community Power.
It does not, I talked extensively about that.
Some green credit pack, is that how they're offering this or what?
Yeah, uh, I believe the way they're doing it is they're producing power at this solar facility at less than what Eversource, um, is. Or any third-party is selling us to us.
They get green power credits.
Yeah, they get green power credits, and, and they're also producing power at less of a cost than what Eversource is buying power at.
And then the green power credits?
Apparently not.
Drill thing. Cause he did, he did for the, the benefits for homes and stuff.
So installation of solar.
Yes, that's the end of this year, yes, yeah.
I know some people scrambling to get done.
While we're on the solar discussion, how are we looking for buying out our solar panels?
Let's, let's wait on that for a second. So, I guess, I guess at this point, um, I'm just saying, I'm just bringing this information to you. And I think I can, I can still continue to work with them, I'll provide the bills, I'll be able to have more information at the next meeting. Uh, in terms of this, it seems like there's not a lot of risk on our part to do something like this. Um, but, uh, I obviously wanna know all the, all the Ps and Qs about.
Yeah, I just want to say, thank, thank you for doing it, I really, I think that's, it could be a good thing.
The fact that we already have solar, you, you know, being generated out the transfer station minimizes our. Our impact here on that ten percent, but you gotta remember, we're already getting a thousand dollars a month benefit out of that solar farm, so. You know, a ten percent here on a bill, you know, it, it still, it, it still could be, you know, an average of, I don't know. Hundred, hundred fifty dollars a month, over a year.
And then the school on top of that, five hundred a month.
The school could be much, much bigger. Yeah, so that's why I'm actually looking at that, so anyway, that's, it's, it's a company called East Coast Renewable Energy. Um, I even had a possibility of, uh, connecting them with some other municipalities because. Um, they're, right now, this is very limited in terms of what they've done in New Hampshire.
When did you get us locked in?
I wanna, yes, yeah, was there a question?
Yeah, I, there's only a limited amount of power a solar farm's gonna generate, right? So you gotta be in, on board early.
Yes.
So there's power for you.
That's correct, and right now, right now, they have power.
They have power for us, but if fifteen communities wanna do it, they could only accept maybe eight or nine, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, that's not the situation right now, but you're right. Now, either that or they build more.
Yeah, exactly.
They might build more farms.
So anyway.
I think that's part of the energy credits, they get money and they can reinvest it in more renewable energy.
So basically, they kinda get not paid for, but they get subsidies to build nuclear facilities.
Yeah, if you, um, if you want in your reading, um, thi- this is a, a sheet that they have for Massachusetts. And this is, so they just gave me this, um, so that you can read through this, if you have other questions, you want me to ask them.
Do you wanna scan that to us?
Uh, it was emailed to you.
How'd you get it?
Uh, sorry, it was sent to you. Yeah, so if you could forward it to, like, I've.
Another one of those hidden ones?
Well, I've been told not to, not to send it on to you guys. Um, yeah, it's, it's, and it's a twenty-year subscription, I'll ask about the question of can they cancel? Uh, for us, it's a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-day notice to cancel.
And no.
No fee, no dollar fee or anything like that. It almost seems a little too good to be true, right, it's just, here's money, and if you wanna take, you wanna take the money by switching to this.
I'm up for nuclear vision by fusion, by ten years, ten, fifteen years.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna initial ads any side.
What else you got for us?
Uh, that's all I.
He's been busy since he's been back.
Do you have anything for us?
He's keeping me busy, yes.
I'm keeping her very busy.
Our, our third, um, mini-split has now failed, that's why the windows are open today right now. Um, yesterday it started, it was smelling kinda smoky, uh, when J R came by this morning. He said that the, uh, unit outside is freezing up, so that's an indicator that there's a, a leak or something. We have replaced the teleports and replaced mine early on, these are the ones.
Which species?
No, these are the ones that were donated to us from Tom Casano, and we just paid for the labor install them. So, they're probably ten years old.
What brand are they then?
It's a generic brand that they don't make now, so I am getting a couple of quotes for, uh, a new unit.
Yep, I remember when we did yours over.
See, but you brought, you brought, you, you asked a question about the solar array.
That's coming up quick.
It is coming up, so, um, I, even being out at the transfer station today, um, Woody was telling me just about the sinkhole that's out there. They keep filling it, they've been putting some concrete bags in it, um, obviously, there's some settling going on. I'm gonna go out there and physically take a look at the whole array, um, but, you know, we want Granite State Solar to make that.
There's one footing in that front row, I think, that has a crack through it. And where that crack is, it's by the sinkhole, and what it's done is it's allowed those two panels to touch up top. But that, I, I've been out there for a year and a half, but that's all I saw when I was there.
Yeah, and physically, I looked at the whole thing just from a distance as I drove down there, um, nothing looked to be like, oh boy, this is a.
No.
This is a trouble.
Those would have touched each other, not say.
In terms of panels or anything, uh, there are, there are still a couple panels that are underproducing, and I wanna get them to fix that. Now that I'm back, I'll, I'll just get on them, I, unfortunately.
Strip footage right on the ground, we wouldn't even allow that installation anywhere else in town, yet we allowed them to do it in our town. You know, those don't, those aren't dug down, those are right strip footage right on the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, we're telling people, homeowners, no, you can't do that, we did for our town.
Yeah, and it, it, it all came because they couldn't end up, they tried to put the anchors in, and then they end up. Hitting the, all the granite boulders that run underneath. Yeah, and it, 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 it all came because they couldn't end up, they tried to put the anchors in and then they end up hitting the, all the granite boulders that run underneath. Yeah, that are, that are in there.
Who put those in?
So, so here's the, here might be the challenge, is. We talked about the solar, federal solar credits ending the end of this year, these solar companies are probably maxed out, right? So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on them, because I think their service department should be different from their installers, but.
And it's been a year and a half.
It, it has been, it has been.
Maybe, maybe we can, uh, offer a discount. Otherwise, we decide we don't want a necessary bucket. You still can lease us to us, or take the move. And if the company's almost, the company's gonna go to a point where they're almost gonna go belly up, because people pay, gonna have to pay no credits, thirty percent of credits are gone. We may be in a better negotiating position than you. You see, we.
Not really.
Yeah, I, I, I think we could negotiate saying, we'll take it as is for.
Less money.
Yeah, four thousand dollars less or something like that, I, I don't know, but I'm not sure I even wanna do that either.
I understand. No, the, the.
I'd rather have them fix it.
Fix it, yes, I agree.
I'll send you my contact, I was sending them emails.
Where you, yeah, and, and I was sending it to them at one time, I haven't done it for a couple months.
I don't even, I don't even think the fix is that expensive, I just don't think they.
I don't think it is either.
Well, with, you gotta realize, they're probably up, up to here in work.
That's what I think.
The more important thing, other than the physical damage, I think that could be fixed easy.
Mm-hmm.